I have three staff members that have been giving me feedback. And we have kind of settled on what we want to do for the award. And it will be initially a aluminum water bottle that says something to the effect of, thank you for being awesome, with an employee of the month in little smiley face. The intention will be to fill the water cup up with their favorite candy items from their little employee survey that they do when they're onboarded. And then like some, like the Christmas lights and something like that. And then we would also like to explore doing something quarterly and maybe annually where there's a little bit bigger reward involved at that point. And we are definitely remiss. There was one staff member who was selected who we did not remember to tell. And I feel horrible that we missed telling them. We chatted with her today. My intention is that on Sunday at that staff training that Jay was mentioning, we will give to all four of them and do photos with them at that time.
Do you need a commissioner for that?
Well, so Julie's kind of screwing it a little bit. Originally, the employee of the month was a board initiative. It was something the board wanted to do. So then when the board brought it back up to do it again, Julie didn't feel like she had enough like direction on what the board wanted to do, if they wanted to be a part of it, which is what kind of delayed the process a little bit. And so I think that's what she wants to know. Do we want to be involved in the process? Or do you just want it to be internal among the managers? Because that's why it comes to the board and why it's on the board, because it was originally a board initiative. And they wanted to be a part of saying, thank you and congratulations and being part of that photo process. But we can do whatever we want. She just doesn't want to skip it if that's something you want to be involved in.
My thoughts would be schedule something and then whoever can make it should make it. And we should do our best to get there.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll put that under Sarah's preview because it, or her view. Uh, because it used to be something Amanda would work with the board to do. So we'll put that back under Sarah. And she had scheduled the employee and with the board to who can come and have a picture with them.
What time do you first Saturday?
It's Sunday.
Or Sunday.
Sunday. So the marketing training is four thirty to five, I believe.
It's the first half hour.
So four thirty to five, it's the marketing training. So we could do it like five fifteen.
Okay, I can be, it should be.
Thank you.
I should too. Yeah. Jamie, you and I can coordinate.
Okay. Any additional reports? All right, we're moving on to committee reports, budget committee.
This is going to be a little bit of things. Sorry.
No, you're fine.
I'm not, you're right. I'm sorry for your feelings, not for the content I'm bringing.
Thanks.
Okay, um, so the budget committee spent some time doing some things. And we find it necessary to come up with and put in writing a long-term spending plan. We recommend that the district put together a strategic budget plan to be used for planning in the future budget years beginning in 2026. The plan can be expanded to include more aspects similar to a more formal strategic plan or a plan. After the initial budget portion is approved, we find it important to put this together, put together this basic portion of the plan right away to assist in our 2026 budget, especially with the change in our levy rates. I'm sorry, levy on that, it's not levy rates, levy rates stay the same. So given that in your packet, after that blue page that I'm reading from, there is a resolution listed. And first, I'll turn it over back to the chair for discussion.
Is there a motion on the table for the resolution? No.
Discussion. Okay, so I move to approve the resolution 2025-03 delineating the schedule and tasks for the creation of a strategic budget plan, which is included in the packet. And it's this one.
Do we have a second for discussion?
Yes, a second.
Right, discussion.
So basically, this just, this sets it up for, um, it, it gives all of us some targets and some goals on, on what we need to put together before we put together our 2026 budget. We're, we're looking at this to do, to end up being a 25-year-ish plan that's going to look at all of the equipment and facilities and figure out when those things need to be replaced, some of them being incredibly costly, hundreds of thousands of dollars, which would break our operating budget immediately if we had to do something like that. So, um, we've already seen, uh, last year, a maintenance plan. Shane provided a maintenance plan before he left, and I think that's been updated a little bit since then, telling us what equipment needed to be updated or replaced in a timely fashion. This just formalizes it from the, from the board to the staff and, and also working together so we can create this plan. And so we know how much we need to put aside in our capital account to afford all this. It also addresses expansion ideas. Any kind of improvements, new programs, those types of things as well. They're on the horizon. And how we pay for them. Okay, now that's all.
Commissioner Hartman? Give a quick moment.
I like the idea of having a targeted schedule. Um, and I like the way the resolution delineated, um, the schedule. My, my initial question really is, since the strategic plan will be reviewed and updated every five years, is there going to be a new resolution every five years targeting, you know, like what, I guess, what is the process for staying on the schedule? And like,
If we stick to the five-year plan, we're on zeros and fives. Do we need a new resolution every year? Potentially.
Every five years.
Every five years, I would say we would, we would probably need it. And we would want to set it up probably the year before, if not earlier than that. Uh, so we're not putting a plan together in six months. The idea is to expand this, to not just include budget items. It would include a lot of other things as well. So as, as mentioned, I suspect in 2026, we may expand a little bit further. I don't know that we need another resolution for that to expand. This is really just setting out some timelines on our short, um, abbreviated process. Because we need to put a budget out before the end of the year. So we don't have the luxury of time to do as much research as would be required for a, a larger plan.
Yeah, okay. Do we already have a strategic plan drafted?
There is some notes. There is not a plan drafted. Um, I believe we're looking at doing that in August. We're gonna.
Is historically, do we have a strategic plan?
So we talked with the board passports about doing it. It's something that they were interested in, but because the whole part about getting the, the feedback and getting it, and then with trying to pass the levy, they thought it was too much to do at once when they were on the board. They thought, let's focus on the levy, getting the levy passed, and then go from there. I know Bill had said that he would like to be part of this discussion. And that comprehensive maintenance plan, that was actually updated in 2022. And so it had already been there from previous. So he did go through and he updated it with real cost at that time. Of course, with tariffs now, obviously, we do have to look at that again with the whole federal government and how that's shaping out. But, um, hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, it does. I, I was hesitant to vote on a resolution with two of our commissioners not being present tonight. But because this resolution is really outlining a plan and allows for us to continue discussion on a timeline, I'm actually comfortable moving forward with this.
I'm like half and half. Because I, I do see that it's a set schedule, but I do kind of want to be part of and discuss the strategic plan. Um, but I see that August. So I would like to just consider tabling this discussion until July so that we can include all the other commissioners.
Okay.
Would you be comfortable with that? I mean, that doesn't push back. I mean, you have August, right?
You know, it, it doesn't, I don't think it affects.
The timeline.
I don't think we would change the timeline from that. We do still need to have our final product in November if we hope to get a budget out.
Yeah.
A, a, a budget that makes sense for the amount of money that we're bringing in and the, the things that we need to do over the course of the next several years.
Right.
Because we can't just, we can't just continue saying, we have this much money and we're going to spend this much money. It's not going to work. We're not, our boiler's going to go down and we're going to go broke.
So do we do an amendment for the motion to table it? Or do we do a separate motion?
We need to vote this down or vote it forward. Forward or down, and then it can be.
So the current motion right now is that we approve the resolution as delineated in the schedule and task for the creation of strategic budget plan. So commissioner Guy, do you vote to approve it or?
I vote to approve.
All right, commissioner Hartman?
No, I know, I just, I just don't, I, I vote to approve because I feel like this opens us up for discussion. Like this, it completely aligns with commissioner Larson's wishes because he wanted to be a part of the discussion. Now he has to be a part of the discussion because that's what the resolution is saying.
So we have a line. Great. So just to be clear, we're, we're approving it to have further discussion in July. Is that right?
I am.
Well, it can, yeah, because this can be added.
Resolution. I, I vote to approve the resolution tonight. So we have a schedule. Again, I would be fine if it changes.
Yeah, no, and, and I'm voting to approve the resolution tonight as well because we can add this as a discussion in July as part of the agenda packet. But now we have targeted dates. You know, now we have a goal. Now we have, you know, things are happening in August. So, you know, we have to talk about it in July. We can't just table it.
So I'm going to ask the executive director. Is this timeline, would that fit your schedule and be able to work with the budget committee? And have a presentation in July?
Well, dating service is busy, is like very busy time for us. So we generally start with our planning process in July with making sure the planning sheets and talking to the staff about it. And then we really get into budgeting in September, um, end of August, September. And then put it before you guys in October. We do use the comprehensive plan to look at what is going into the capital line. So remember when you guys got the capital list? That was off of the comprehensive plan. So I don't really feel like for us that this will change how we budget in terms of, because the comprehensive plan was something that was already approved by the board. And that's what we'll be working off of when we budget anyways. When it comes to expansion, I know you said about the boiler. Hopefully that doesn't happen, you scared me.
I had to come up with a good example. An expensive example.
Yeah. But, I mean, if you guys tell us to do it, we don't have a choice, right? So it'll, it'll get done one way or another.
So I guess now I'm really confused again. What's the difference between the strategic plan and the comp plan? Because when I asked you if we had a historical strategic plan, I guess what I meant was, is do we have a comprehensive plan?
We have a comprehensive maintenance plan that says we will replace windows. We will replace locker rooms. We will replace, we'll do painting. We'll do, you know, stuff on a schedule. That's what we have.
Maintenance.
It's maintenance related.
Okay.
But it talks nothing about expansion because when we talked about doing a strategic plan about what, what our community want.
Right.
That would take a large survey to know what our community wants us to expand, right?
Right.
Is the city going to build a rec center? Or they're not going to build a rec center? And so that, that's why they don't have that done. The only feasibility study that they did was an expansion on the pool probably two decades ago. That's the only study that I have seen.
So we're not, some other examples of things that we've already talked about are like putting power in for a couple hundred thousand dollars at Clover Valley.
Right.
I mean, a capital project that's not on the comprehensive man, maintenance plan, but it's something, it is a capital project that we won't be able to just slide the credit card and make that happen.
Right.
Power in cameras.
Right.
So that's the kind of thing we're trying to consolidate into one budget talk.
Gotcha.
So, how much money are we planning on spending? No, this is, in August is when you see the first draft.
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 Yeah.
So there's already some notes put together. There's already some, some ideas kind of put down on paper and taking the comp plan, the things that were talked about before and kind of consolidating those. So there's nothing that says that the whole board can't participate in this. And I think we should all participate in it. But it, it is more like the budget committee's doing the legwork with the, the staff.
And you're presenting it. And this is really just a schedule?
Yeah.
The board actually had not put in the Clover Valley plan before. There was a hot, hot committee that was put together to this, to talk with the baseball about what they wanted. And the price tag came out between forty-five and seventy-five thousand dollars. And the board said that they would never sink, the old board, just history. The old board said that they would never sink that much money into it without feedback from the community, that that's where they wanted to sink that much money into it. So that's why it wasn't included in the comprehensive plan.
To clarify, in August, when you do present, that is when the expectation is for the board to approve the strategic plan?
No.
No?
Not at all. We're not looking to do that till November. August is when we show you a product that says, this is the, this is where we're, we're heading. And do you like the way we're heading or do you not like the way we're heading? Do we need more feedback? We need more subjects?
Sounds like we do need a special meeting though, too.
Probably so.
All right, again, I'll, I'll ask for the votes. I, I believe commissioner Guy, you're voting yes to approve this.
I'm voting yes to approve the plan, or approve the resolution tonight.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Great. I, I will vote yes as well to move the resolution because it is just the schedule.
It's the schedule.
Yeah, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So the resolution, uh, for 2025-03 delineating the schedule and task for creation of strategic budget plan. All right. Number two.
Okay, number two. So we did a, a look at the, um, and we have all these in the packets, but, uh, and your blue sheets don't match the numbers I'm going to give you, just so you know. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you in the camera while I talk. So there's a page that looks like this, just to be clear, what we're, we're talking about. This page right here without the logo on it. Page without the logo on it, this is our cash account. So this tells us how much is in our, our, in this case, the maintenance cash account. Typically, right after that, you have one with a logo on it. The one with the logo on it is an investment account. So in this case, we have, looking at the bond, we have two hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents in a bond fund that is invested. And then we also have seventeen dollars and forty cents in a bond cash account. Cash account earns no interest or dividends. The investment account does. The interest and dividends go from the investment account, get paid into the cash account. So everything that we gain goes into the cash account. Haven't lost anybody yet, right? Everybody, everybody following? I just wanted to make that clear before I start talking about this. So when we talk about the, um, the maintenance account, which is our operating account for all intents and purposes, current val, or current cash balance is eight hundred and eleven thousand, two thirty-four. Our, and this is all on the the sheet with all the balances on it, which is nice and pretty. Thank you, Julie. I love it. So the budget committee is recommending that we move some extra cash into our investment accounts. And basically, this is, this is cash that we will use, but we're not ready to use it right now. And in an effort to put that money to work while we're, we're holding on to it, we're recommending that we move some of those, those balances around. I'll hand this to you after I'm done with the numbers on it.
Okay.
So, so my first motion is to transfer two hundred and three thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars from the reserve cash account to the reserve investment account. This is reserve money to reserve money. So reserve cash to reserve investment. And that leaves, I'm sorry, let me, let me say the whole thing and then I'll, that's fine. I move to transfer two hundred and three thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars from reserve cash account to reserve investment account, leaving fifty thousand dollars in the reserve cash account. End of motion.
Second. All in favor?
Discuss.
Or discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, discussion. That leaves fifty thousand dollars regularly, ready to go. If it needs to be, if, if something goes wrong, it's ready to go. There's no transfer. There is a two-day waiting period to get this out of the investment account, back to our cash account. So this leaves fifty thousand dollars in our reserve account to handle something. Our two hundred and three thousand dollars. I'll, I'll come back to that, I'm sorry. That's it for that. So, oh, I'll turn it over.
So we have motion in the second, discussion.
Yeah, we're discussing, yeah. Um, is fifty thousand dollars enough reserve to, yeah, cash reserve, sorry, enough to address immediate emergencies as they happen? Because so I'm, let me give you kind of where this question is coming from. If not the boiler, but like the heater and the sauna breaks, right? And you don't have two days to wait to fix it, right? Is that going to be enough to handle something along that line? Where if we have to address something, then we can't wait the two days, like?
If you have to replace the boiler, um, if any, any mechanical item that we have to replace that's large, like a heater, that's going to be months out. It, most likely it will shut us down.
Okay.
It, it's not a money, it's not a, a matter of, of reserves. It's a matter of getting the parts from China.
Okay.
Um, so for instance, when we put in the heater above the locker rooms, that we waited eight or nine months for the heater to get in. Uh, because they have to order all the components and then they have to build it. Now, if you're, if you're, say that you got lucky and somebody had a boiler in stock, it wouldn't be enough. I think our last boiler cost us a hundred and fifty-six thousand. Uh, but say that the computer for the boiler goes down. Uh, that was only fifty-seven hundred dollars to replace. So it really depends on what you're talking about. So our sauna did just break down.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Weeks ago, which was like, huh? It, it was down for two days. It took an electrician, but I, that's just going to be the cost. It was a very easy fix. It was just wire broke. So that's just going to cost us the labor of the people that were here. It, it really, I, I don't mean to be vague, but it really depends on what it is that breaks. Our most expensive thing right now is if something happens to the roof, the lining of the pool. If something happens to one of our filters, those are our big taken items. Do I see those happening? No.
Yeah. Well, and it also sounds to me like those, those things that you're mentioning would take more than two days to address anyways. So that's the time we're looking at in transferring. I'm, that is, your motion makes sense to me. Some of the context that I wanted to gather is that, is that enough?
Okay, did you want to share with them? It's okay. Um, also, we would send out of the M and O first.
I, I was going to say that, but I just want to jump over.
See that? Yeah, and I believe the plan is to leave a larger sign in that M and O.
Okay.
Okay. So just a review. Um, there's a motion to transfer two hundred and three thousand dollars and forty, two hundred and three.
Two hundred and three, one fifty-two.
One fifty-two.
Okay. From the reserve cash account to the reserve investment account, leaving fifty thousand dollars in reserve cash account. We've got a safer vote, which, yeah.
Typically, that capital fund would be funded by something that is specifically drawing money in for that capital fund. Or, um, like the bond fund where you get a bond approved and you get the money from the company that's giving you the bond and you dump it in the bond account. And that's where you make your bond payments out of. So typically, that's what funds those accounts are different types of revenue streams. But you can have a policy that says, at the end of this year, transfer this amount of money into, with what you have left over from your M and O. Transfer this amount of money into it based on these numbers. You could also do, consider that in the future, just.
I was thinking either semi-annually or quarterly, we will restack business. And that's, that's off to the side. That's not part of this.
Okay. Any other discussion, comment? All right. Let's try this again. For voting, commissioner Guy? Voting yes?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Hartman?
Yeah.
All right, and I vote yes as well. All in favor?
Sure.
I did. I'm going to make all of them because I have numbers.
And Melissa, did you second?
Yes. You can have this when I'm done.
Commissioner Guy?
Okay. Um, I am making another motion. I move to transfer three hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars from the operations cash account to the reserve investment account, leaving five hundred and five thousand dollars in the operating cash account.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm assuming yes.
So this currently has eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars in it? I believe, is that right?
Who said? Three eleven, two three four. So I'm assuming it's eight eleven, two three four.
No.
Or eight oh six, two three four?
Wait a minute, hold on, I think I got that wrong. I may need to revise my motion. Um, I would like to talk about this a little bit because I don't, there's, there isn't, there is a reason for that number. I do need to revise that, actually. I need to take it down by five thousand dollars.
So three oh six, two three four?
Three oh six, two three four.
Okay.
Can I withdraw my motion, please?
Okay.
So I moved to transfer three oh six, two three four from the operations cash account to the reserve investment account, leaving five hundred and five thousand dollars and five cents in the operating cash account.
Second.
What's the total? Three oh six?
Three oh six, two thirty-four. So, um, I did some maths.
All right, you did a motion. Do we have a second?
I think you did.
I did, yeah, I seconded, yeah.
Well, we did the first motion, I was making sure.
Yeah, I, and I seconded the second motion because the first motion was rescinded.
Okay.
We're still discussing.
Just want to make sure.
Okay. So what I did is I took the balance from the M and O account for the last year. Um, there are months when we, our expenses exceed our income. And there are months that our income exceeds our, our balance, our, our expense. Income exceeds those things. The, the biggest amount is a negative two hundred and thirty-nine thousand and fifty-nine. And that is when we're not getting much in the way of taxes. It's in January, uh, lots of expenses in January. Biggest month on the other side, we actually have two of them, are April and May, where we Um biggest month on the other side, we actually have two of them, are April and May, where we bring in a positive net of five thirty-two thousand and five hundred, I'm sorry, I forgot, just one more. So if you average out the entire year, plus is a negative just out of the M and O account, so I know this is not a true, um a true P and L, but it, it nets us a positive two forty-four, nine forty-four over the last year. So basically saying, let's leave an extra, let's leave double that in the cash account. Um, I think, looking at that, that should, we should not have to move money again, based on the fact that we're gonna get tax revenue in, we're gonna get front desk revenue in. Um, and our, our expenses should be covered by that. At the worst case scenario, we should have six months worth of operating, and we can obviously move it back if we needed to. But this would allow that extra three hundred thousand dollars to work for us in the, in the way of dividends. So that's my, that's my feel on that part.
Are you ready to vote?
Um, is there a reason why we haven't, like, why it's not in the investment account already?
The board has to direct it, and they've just chosen not to.
Okay.
To get them to move money the first time into the reserve took me three years.
Oh, I have one more thing. This actually puts us five thousand dollars short of our four-month reserve goal. When we do this, we are uh five thousand dollars short of, of four months of operating costs. And that was the goal that uh Jay talked about with the, the committee. I don't know if she talked about it with the board, but the committee is a four-month goal, four months of operating costs. So this takes the balance of the reserve investment account up high enough that we have four months of operating costs.
Uh yes, I believe you do, yeah. I believe you have to transfer from the M and O to the reserve, and then from the reserve to the reserve investment.
Fun, yeah, withdraw again?
Sure. I hope you're documenting that properly, cause I don't know how to amend or revoke. Is that like?
Oh, do we vote to? Do we have to?
If he draws it, it makes a new one, then you don't have to go through the whole amendment thing.
Okay.
And so I think that's why he's been withdrawing.
Gotcha.
I just wanna make sure you're using the correct, correct terminal.
So that means I have two movements from the reserve cash account. Now, are you guys okay with that? Okay.
Tabledrews.
Okay, so my original motion was withdrawn, so I am, I move to transfer three hundred and six thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars from the operations cash account to the reserve cash account. Leaving five hundred and five thousand dollars and five cents in the operating cash account.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I voted yes, too.
So second part of that now is I'm, I move to transfer three hundred and six thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars from the reserve cash account to the reserve investment account. Leaving fifty thousand dollars and twenty-seven cents in the reserve cash account.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. Commissioner Guy, your vote?
I'm in favor.
Commissioner Hartman?
Favor.
Commissioner Whitmer in favor? If we're voting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion has passed.
Uh housekeeping, I move to transfer two hundred and forty dollars from the capital cash account to the capital investment account, leaving four dollars and forty-one cents in the capital cash account.
Second.
Discussion?
Just moving the extra money.
Uh Commissioner Guy, your vote?
I'm in favor.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitmer, yes. All in favor, motion is pass. Oh, yes, aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Um I moved to transfer five thousand dollars from the operations cash account to the capital cash account. Leaving five hundred thousand dollars and five cents in the operating cash account.
Second.
Discussion? Is this essentially the same thing?
It is taking, n- no, no, this is actually a contribution to the capital account.
Okay.
So this is starting to build up our capital account.
Okay.
Commissioner Guy?
I am in favor.
Commissioner Herman, yes. Commissioner Whitmer in favor? Motion, all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
So I have to do that one again now, too.
Motion has passed for that one.
So now I move to transfer five thousand dollars from the upper, I'm sorry, the capital cash account to the capital investment account. Leaving four dollars and forty-one cents in the account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Commissioner Guy, your vote?
I'm in favor.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitmer in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, aye. Motion has passed.
Okay, I'm done moving money now.
All right.
So item, can I go to item three? Okay, item number three, there's another vehicle breakdown, uh which required another unexpected repair. The committee um noted this, that a budget would have to be adjusted again um on this, we've already done this once this year. Um in reviewing that, the committee recommends that the budget be adjusted to consolidate all vehicle expenses into a single heading category. This will alleviate the requirement for the budget updates if anything else happens in this category. The budget committee plans to take a more consolidated approach in the budget process for twenty twenty-six to keep the adjustments minimal. What's happening is we have, we have six lines for the vehicle, I think it's six lines for the vehicle. We're, we're suggesting that we consolidate that to a single line on Clover Valley and a single line on the um on the uh J B M P. So we're not accounting for gas separate from maintenance, separate from any other costs. We're, we're just gonna do one vehicle maintenance, and currently, we're gonna do it all in, we're gonna leave them on, under the budget headings. Which I will talk about in a minute, the budget headings are listed in the motion. But basically, we have gas that's a subheading of that, or a subcategory of that, and we have maintenance, which is a subcategory. We don't have any more money in the maintenance accounts to cover this maintenance cost, so we need to, we either need to move money from somewhere else or we need to consolidate this into the budget heading. Um going forward, our plan is to, rather than say we're gonna spend fifty-six dollars on gas and we're gonna spend a hundred and forty-four dollars on maintenance, we're gonna say we're gonna spend two hundred dollars on vehicles. That's kind of the direction we're looking at for the twenty twenty-six budget. Put it under the heading, and then we'll still have the categories built in, but the budget item approved by the board will be um approved under the heading. So with that, I move to consolidate all budget amounts under heading five seventy-six dot twenty dot thirty-three into heading line for a total of nine hundred and seventy-five in line item five seventy-six twenty thirty-three.
Second.
Discussion?
Just that it makes sense.
Commissioner Guy?
In favor?
Commissioner Harmon, yes. Commissioner Whitmer in favor, all in favor, vote.
Yes.
Is that the correct way?
I think we only have to do it once.
Yeah.
Okay.
So either way, just do it.
So motion has passed.
So. Uh we have one more, because that was the, uh I think that was the J B M P side, now we need to do Clover Valley, I'm sorry, the other way around. I think that was Clover Valley, we need to do J B M P side.
Yep.
So I moved to consolidate all budget amounts under the heading five seventy-six eighty thirty-three into heading line for the total of one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars in line item five seventy-six eighty thirty-three.
Second.
Discussion? Commissioner Guy?
In favor?
Commissioner Herman?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitmer in favor? Motion has passed. Any additional? This is budget amendment discussion, is that a different one?
Where did you see that?
It's number four. Under.
I mean, I got a mile order in.
Under Committee Reports, number four.
I think we just had that.
Okay.
Cause we amended the budget in such a way that we consolidated.
Gotcha, okay.
Is that, Julie, am I missing something?
Cause one was the resolution, two was investment accounts, three is the budget line consolidation. And number four is this budget amendment discussion.
It was just a budget amendment discussion. I wasn't sure if you wanted that separate, it was me who.
Oh, I kinda threw it in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just basically, we're looking at consolidating the, the lines to so we give a little bit more freedom and not do budget amendments every time we overspend in one category or one subcategory.
All right.
Since you're on a roll, you wanna talk for Program Committee?
I had so much in there, I forgot.
Actually, um Julie, we'd be better off discussing.
Um so the program planning sheet, I did a partial update based on what we had discussed in Program Committee. I did forget to put in the life cycle of the equipment, so I still need to go back and add that. I left equipment on the same page because it still is an associated cost of the program. But in the calculation for the second page, it will remove the equipment cost from the expense total. Yeah, Jay and I actually chatted back and forth, um because my understanding was that we would still leave the other expenses on this sheet. But she had written it differently in the notes than I had, uh. I literally scribbled it out and said, remove, because David and I, we were sitting across from each other, and I said, so remove this line, and he goes, yeah. Yes, but my understanding was it was remove equipment from the calculation on this page. So that is how I have it formatted currently. And then in the future budget conversation, we will need to discuss the line appropriate to put equipment for.
Yeah.
The reason that we wanted to put it for you, though, is because like I said, we, I, we told Jane, or Commissioner Whitmer and Guy this, but these are the sheets that we give the staff to start pro-budget, building their budgets, so that when you when we come to the budget workshop, you have all this information, and you can see how we build the costs and the prices and stuff like that. So before we started doing that, we wanted to make sure that the planning sheets were what you guys were wanting, because back in an action item once upon a time, you guys had directed us to revisit those, and so I wanted to make sure we did that before July.
Any questions about planning sheets? All right, and then uh for the Dino program, it was just purely that they are not participating this summer, as listed. No updates for bylaws, can we? All right. Agent item number eight A, unfinished business. Exept the director performance review, Commissioner Hartman?
Um, so I took some time today, and I made the changes for um uh what we discussed during the workshop. Um, but I think we're gonna need to table this discussion until July. Um because I didn't have time to print and present, you know, kind of those changes. And that'll give us another month to go through the second half of.
And have the whole board.
And have the whole board here to discuss, so I, I think we just move it forward a month.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Do I need to make a motion to?
I think it's just unfinished business.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we'll just have that as an action item to be on the, an action item to be on the agenda for July.
Okay.
So eight B?
In that finished business?
Yes. Moving on to eight B, unfinished business, computer upgrades.
So you have a nice little hand, it's not bigger. Um, but the yellow is everything we need to upgrade, just to be clear. Um, and this was, remember, we had the conversation last month about, they had had some turnover at Wimby Tech. So what we knew that we needed to do, we already put in front of you, so this would be in addition to what we need to do, because Windows ten is gonna stop being supported in October by Microsoft. And so some of our computers, which were referred, like the ones that you see that are ten years old. Those were already refurbished, so we went cheaper back in twenty nineteen. So just to get computers up and going again, and so um that's why they only had Windows ten on them, because they were refurbished at the time, and so that's what it could handle. Um, but now going up to Windows eleven, that hardware won't support Windows eleven.
Is there any action needed by the B O C for this?
Um. I did give you a motion in today's handouts, that I did.
Yeah, there is, um.
Oh, I don't have that.
That computer upgrade should be a budget adjustment, right?
Yeah, but she can do that later, when giving us still the permission to go ahead and purchase it, and still get it taken care of.
I have lots of questions.
Okay.
Why are they charging five seventy-five per laptop?
Because it's based on how many hours it takes each laptop to get it.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to say this without being a jerk. What do we get for thirteen hundred dollars a month?
Lately, we a lot. And remember, they're gonna go back and they're gonna fix the problem that they already created with the teams and at their costs, so every time that somebody forgets their password or the internet goes down, which in our human environment, the internet goes down a lot because it corrodes the equipment. Um, and so when a laptop, so like they were here. Uh, there's been days when they showed up on a Saturday to get our Wi-Fi working again.
Don't they charge us extra for that, though?
Only if we go through our B C A hours. Lately, we've been going through them, we get four a month. And so there have been months in the past where we banked them, and you could bank them for a month a month. Uh, we're just in a, in a point now where it's replacement, so it takes time to undo it, wipe a computer then get it set up for the next person, then get them over here, get it hooked up. We did try to take on some of the costs ourselves, so like Julie and I ordered our own computers, so we don't get the markup from them purchasing the computer for us. And so we'll plan to do that with um like Jenna's computer, but some of it too. We tried to do it with the, within the existing budget, but the tariffs had already kind of hit us when we went to go order our computers, so we had to like doubly look, like we didn't go with Dell this time, we went with a Costco brand this time. Well, not a Costco brand, but we got ours from Costco this time. And in an effort to try and recoup some of those costs, because we're literally seeing them fluctuating by day. And so um some of that isn't then when it comes to the hardware, but the hours wise, I mean at, at one point, we had three people over here getting the HVAC up and running again when the HVAC computer went down, so, yeah.
Yeah, and, and the reason I even say that, and it, it, I would, I wouldn't say it's um, to be critical of the, the people that work for Wimby Tech Solutions or run it. It, it just seems like we're spending a lot of money on, on tech. Um, and then every month, it, it's a new computer problem. And I, I get that we have a monthly fee, but then there's fees on top of the monthly fee, so um, and it's just something that we're, we're, we're trying to watch, you know, like how much are we really putting into this and what are we getting back out of it? Are we getting the right return on that? And, and that's where, that's where the nature of that question is coming from.
And I mean, it is something, if we wanted to look at an I T professional, we have an I T professional on the staff here.
I, I did think about that.
But, and typically in organizations like ours, they either have that, they either have a full-time person that's doing that stuff, or like when I worked with a town in Jersey, we were in the same boat, where we were contracting with the company who then gave us time. But part of that problem is now we share that company with other people, right? And so that's why some of the times we get some of the delays that we do, because we're on an island.
Yeah, I, I do kind of wonder if it would be. Yeah, I I do kind of wonder if it would be more cost effective to hire a part-time I T person. Um, I mean, we just spent two thousand dollars last month on I T, so.
I'm thinking now. I'm thinking.
Yeah.
They get more than thirteen hundred dollars a month. That's what we're going to spend on a part-time.
Two thousand.
That thirteen hundred is also our Microsoft licensing. That's not extra computer maintenance.
Okay. It's, it's not, I'm not saying we need to go down this road. It's just the, I'm highlighting something there.
Mm-hmm.
That is a.
You know, I, I told them that if this next fix doesn't work, we're going out to R F B next year.
Okay.
Cause I, I can't keep having the problems that we're having. But part of the other problem is Microsoft is rolling out updates left and right. And so when the updates roll out, it it crashes. So like our, my laptop, right? Couldn't open PDF files because Microsoft did a rollout. So now they had to go in and they had to add a PDF viewer. Which now has caused other problems. Um, and so I don't know why it's doing that. But they believe that Microsoft is trying to force us to go all online. And that's another thing too, right? We're paying a monthly fee that you didn't used to pay. You used to buy the program, you own the program. It's no longer like that. Now you have to pay the monthly per mailbox, per app user, per. And so, yeah.
So all of that is wrapped into that, that Wimby Tech. Awesome, okay. So that, that, that softens that blow a little bit more. So definitely, um. Now, I do have one more question about, you said you guys went out to Costco and are we going to get the, the same longevity out of those laptops, do you think? Are those computers?
We, so we went to Costco because of her, your experience with your laptop, right?
Yeah, I had purchased a laptop through Costco, the same brand laptop several years ago. And they have really great concierge warranty service. And they sent me a machine that was value higher than the one that I have the issue with.
Mm-hmm.
And. That one same brand lasted me eight years. I'd say pretty heavy personally, speaking of my members.
Is this a, is this a twenty twenty-five thing? We're going to do this in twenty twenty-five, these replacements?
We shouldn't have to do any hardware replacement in twenty.
These, these computers that need to be replaced?
Yes, this, yeah, it happened before October. I did ask them to, uh. Like if we could, get us to save up some B C hours before we did the next one. To hopefully get some of those hours. So we're, the plan is to get them all done by October. But to hopefully do, you know, a computer in September that could use the B C A hours instead of the five seventy-five. Because when he sent me the quote, he was thinking he would just use B C A hours because they would be banked. And I called him and I go, um, pretty, and that's why it it updated a little bit from last week. Cause we were still waiting for him to come and look when I left. And, um, I said to him, I don't think I have any B C A hours left. I think we have eaten them all up. And so he went back and confirmed, he was like, you're right, you have and you will have to utilize that cost.
So i- am I, am I assessing this correctly that there are nine computers?
I didn't.
Is, are they all listed here?
Yes.
Okay, so we have nine computers. Um. Go, kind of going back to our, our strategic budget plan. Can we look at potentially putting together a replacement schedule so we don't replace all of them in the same year?
Well, and that's.
Maybe like. Two a year or something?
That's what we had started working towards. Unfortunately, the person who was in charge of that would be tech left. And so we kind of were on this, like we replaced our, our laptops, our, our desktops with laptops two years ago.
Yeah.
And then now those will get passed down and then the, so we have in our incrementally done it. But when I first got here, we can do all the upgrades that we needed to. And so this is kind of a leftover from that, is I tried to stretch them as much as I could.
So those two are twenty twenty-three or, yeah.
The, the new, so the ones that we're handing off to, like the head lifeguard and stuff, it tells you who we're handing them off to.
Okay.
Cause we use them more. So like one of those.
Yeah.
Computers is shared. And so instead of, like originally, we were going to replace Jenna before we replaced Mitch. But we have to replace both of them now in order to, but like Jenna, we try to go at who's using the most computer. And that's me, Julie, Ben.
So five ten-year-old computers are being replaced, is that right? And two are being passed down and then?
Um.
Seven computers are being bought, is that correct?
No, we're only buying. Yes, thank you. We already had it budgeted to buy two.
I mean, I, I get it. Okay, a- aside from the budget though, we are in twenty twenty-five. They're going to be coming in, is it three one, three of them?
Three new ones.
Three new ones are coming in.
In, in twenty twenty-five altogether, it would be five new ones.
Okay.
Two already purchased, three set to be purchased.
Okay, I see.
I said that right, right? Cause it's H VAC.
Yeah, I, that makes sense. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and and that was, that's kind of what I, I was not doing so much for the money part. But like more like a replacement plan to see how spread apart they are so that we can figure out. Cause I think ten years is a long time to hold a computer. Um.
You know, I tried to stretch it.
I know, and and it'll, it'll go in our, it'll go in our budget plan so we can look at replacements. Uh, maybe sooner than later so that we can get on a plan.
In that time, I've created it to a different server and, and so we have done some of that, so.
Yeah.
But I wasn't in any position financially to do that before two years ago.
Right, I understand. And then I want to write that into the plan so that we are, we're building our financial future on that, that in. I realize we're buying new computers right now, but maybe in three years, we're already buying more.
Yeah, well, yeah, like two years ago, we bought new laptops and then turned around, we're getting new laptops again two years later. That was the plan. Next year would be another two, but unfortunately, Windows beat me to it.
But in two years, uh, my thought is those twenty twenty-three laptops are being retired.
Um, well, we'll look at the longevity of Windows eleven.
I know, but if we create a plan where we're replacing two a year, then we're not footing that entire bill all in one year. And we're looking at, so in two years, yeah, it might be a little bit early to replace a twenty twenty-three laptop. But if we don't do that, if we don't start that process, then in twenty twenty-seven, we have to replace all of them again, all at once.
So I agree, like to get on a regular replacement plan, I just think that we should match it to the, uh, to the, not the hardware. To the programs that are dictating what the hardware needs are.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's a discussion for another day. Um, I, I, I would, I'm in favor of.
Well, and I did ask because I know that, um, Wimby Tech has a program that now does that, like a separate program. And I asked them to provide us with that in September.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So maybe I'll, I'll ask for it now in August since I got that done by September.
You said there was a motion?
I do need a motion for this.
I'm sorry, we went straight to discussion.
No, no, it's just fine. I just think I don't have a.
Yes?
Yeah.
All you did.
I moved to approve the computer upgrades in the amount of five thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents.
Okay.
Second.
All, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion has been approved. Did that count as discussion?
Oh, yeah. Is there discussion? Sorry.
Sorry, I, I kind of.
No, no, okay, okay.
I, I went out of order, I'm sorry.
To recap, we have approved the motion for the computer upgrade. Alright, moving forward, credit card S O P.
Um, fascinating. So a few meetings ago, we discussed doing an S O P for the credit card usage. And I spent some time, once I finished our annual report, working on this. And then Jay and I reviewed and we made some tweaks. This is just character of feedback. I anticipated, um, some feedback before we finalize it. It largely takes us back to. Um, prior to my time in the position, the way that credit cards were handled for data usage. And then it adds some layers to ensure more frequent review of transactions. So that there are no surprises when statement come, comes. And then also to facilitate that reconciliation process to ensure that we are submitting that for processing. Through the county as quickly as possible.
Any comments or discussion?
Are we, um, have we approved this or is this approved by you as a staff?
I think that that is up to you guys. In my research, it is something that is often approved by a board.
Mm-hmm.
Has.
We were asked to update it by.
Right.
We were asked to work on it by the board.
So, I mean, in, in light of the who's here and who's not here, I think it would be best if we'd look at this again next month.
Okay.
Um, I, I, we definitely are on the track, um, but can we look at it again next month?
Yeah.
You did put it by that first month, right?
Um, Commissioner Crainer has reviewed it, that budget committee, Commissioner Larson has not.
Okay.
Yeah, and Commissioner Larson had, had some feedback on it, if I remember last meeting. Um, he had some thoughts on it. So I think it would probably be best that we're all here to look at it.
I'm typically looking at this, but is there, uh, direction as far as? When, cause I know in the past, the concern was not having a receipt submitted. Is, is that can be included in there?
This does. Back B C storage as part of it.
Where was that? I like skimmed right through it then.
At the.
Bottom of the first page.
Bottom of the first page.
Top of the second.
Three D storage and then onto the back.
Did it tell you a time limit?
Yeah, so is under statement reconciliation of receipt submission. Um, so number two, on like kind of a third of the way down the second page. Um. So the business manager gets the statement and gives it to the person by the fifth of the month and may need to re- return it by the tenth of the month.
Okay.
And you see those in your packets?
Mm-hmm, yeah. I just think that in the past, we've always had comments about not having receipts to do reconciliation in a timely manner. I just wanted to make sure it's listed on here as well. Alright, so it sounds like we are going to table this for July for, uh, unfinished business. Alright, moving on, new business. Employee of the month.
This month, we selected Taran Osaro for employee of the month. Um, she is always happy and lovely and welcoming to our patrons. She works as a lifeguard and client service specialist. She requested to work in day camp this summer, so she has just completed training for that. And just this evening, she provided an excellent example of her dedication to our patrons and her helpful teamwork nature. We had an instructor who got through and realized she was missing her swim suit at home. And very last minute, Taran threw on, um, swim attire and hopped in water with a class. To ensure that the lessons went off, um, on time and allowed that instructor to run on the ground with her suit. Um, just a perfect example of, um, her team working her spirit for us.
Awesome. Will she be one of the recognized on Sunday?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, item number ten, executive session. I believe we do not have one, right? Alright, item number eleven, item review.
You can review the process on the July unfinished business.
You're on the limit too, right?
Yeah, we're, we're pulling forward the eighty.
Um.
Review.
Review, and then we're pulling forward the, um, credit card S O P.
That was another huge action end use. Your final board comments. Commissioner Guy?
Um, thank you everybody for your time and dedication. Uh, congratulations to Taran on her, uh, selection.
Commissioner Hartman?
Ditto.
Thanks. Alright, I have two comments. One is, when is the next B O C staff meeting? I thought it was supposed to be quarterly.
So. I know that we talked about doing like a catch and flick out at the dog park as a possibility. I need to chat with Arhan Lifberg and see what kind of timeframe she's looking at. And then if the board can email Sarah with your guys' availability, we can get that settled.
Imagine, for some reason, I had like this begin on my calendar for a meeting.
We had discussed them as a possibility and then I think with the full staff training and our P A N training.
It's just a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. Cause we're doing it quarterly, so June would be one. And then, what's the next? July?
September.
September and then December, right?
Three, six, nine and twelve?
Yeah.
I think so.
Uh, so you want us to provide our availability to Sarah? Okay.
That would be.
For July?
I would say for July.
Okay.
And I'll chat with Arhan Lifberg about, um, the training schedule. I know that they have a new service in July. And it might be something that maybe we've been working around that and because of the availability myself with it.
Okay. Um, I did forget to introduce Clara.
I was thinking that too.
Clara, do you want to introduce yourself?
Um, hi, I'm Sarah. I'm in New Orleans in the state of Maine.
Did you?
And the other one is, um, do you, does the B O C have any involvement with the July fourth parade?
So you can have as much involvement as you would like. I did confirm yesterday that we are at the beginning of the parade after like the fire department and police. Um, and we are in force of the city of O'Hartman.
Do we have enough staff?
Um, so we do have, I mean, we rarely have a lot of staff for this because it's very pale, when they go to the office, they're feeling, it's. It's the day the pools close, so then calling them back into work, right? Um, but we do put a call out and say, hey, cause we're also working in the booth. But generally, it's usually, I mean, you know, it's me, you, Carolyn.
Yeah, do we do, uh, reach out to the kid? Exactly.
Um, I asked Wimby volleyball club if they had any kids that were willing to walk. And then we've reached out also to the, uh, Wimby baseball club to see if they had kids that wanted to walk as well.
Have a basketball?
Um, I, I haven't yet, cause I wanted to see if they, we, last year, we had a group because it was. That red coordinator's team.
Yeah. Didn't we send out like a email out, hey, come join us?
We have in the past and just haven't gotten anybody to do it, because they're usually doing other things, so.
Okay.
I'll clean on walking again this year, but I'm wearing shorts.
Well, what's happening?
So we do, I think it's depending on the lineup starts. But as long as you have somebody that can drop you off, you could just do like a roll out the car at, you know, like ten forty-five. But we'll have the truck and we'll have the razor. And so if you want to put your stuff in the back of the razor again, like we did last year.
Yeah.
Um, and then the. Last year, I think the word was in the truck, except for you.
I was with you.
Yeah, you were with me.
I walked.
You walked, so.
I did happen that.
There, um.
Commissioner Crainer was broken, so she rode.
I think that, yeah.
I think one of the day camp staff will be there. I'm not sure. We asked them if they could, um. But day camp doesn't make happening with started, so in the past, we've asked day camp kids to come, but they're all. It's kind of a hard one for us to get, because they're already involved in other things and.
Yeah.
Uh.
Well, I'll bring my kiddo from Wimby volleyball club and I can walk in either capacity.
Yeah.
As a commissioner or as a patron, so.
Well, and everybody loves SpongeBob, so that's why we're like, we're, we bring him, we bring Patrick, everyone. Carolyn starts singing, everybody's having a fun. Um, I don't have a route though this year. Is it downtown near again?
I think so. No.
Cause the carnival's at Windjammer this year.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's at, what, I think they call it Marsh. The Marsh area, it's that parking just to the left or right of the park.
Of the lagoon?
So, and then we have. So if you go, is that Beeksma right there that goes into the park? It's that big grassy area on the right, I believe.
Okay.
Isn't that wetlands?
That's what I'm calling Marsh.
Wait, they're going to do a carnival in there?
That's what I'm saying.
Sounds like a good plan.
That's a good idea. Did they not learn anything from the swings that fell over?
Apparently not.
It'll be interesting. Alright, any additional, uh, board comments? No? Okay, I think we are, so our next meeting is. Okay, I think we are, so our next meeting is. Um, July twenty-fourth, six P M. Um, anyone else adjourned, do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I second.
Alright, meeting adjourned at seven eighteen P M. I don't do the vote for anything over that, do we? No, okay.
No, mostly.
Thank you for letting me second something.
You're welcome. Alright, so please adjourn.